It looks like everybody is here and so I'm just gonna wait till it hits 5 o'clock to call a meeting to order.
Yeah, okay, and it is recording now. I'm gonna go start the stream.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
I'll just give her a minute to do that. Okay, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to a special meeting of the school board. It is September 2nd, 2020. And I will call the meeting to orders, 5:01. We will do roll call, starting with Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mr. Derrick's.
Here.
Ms. Fair.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Tower.
Here.
And Chair is present, so all school board members are in attendance this evening. We'll go ahead and take a moment to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
With liberty.
And justice for all. Thank you, everyone. I will go ahead and read the vision and mission of our Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens. You see our meeting agenda that was posted in the Board Packet. Because this is a special meeting, there is no changes that can be made to the agenda. Heidi, do we still need to vote on this agenda even though we can't change it?
Uh, yes, I think that'd be best.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Christensen on voting the agenda as presented. Mr. Christensen.
Aye.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Derrick's.
Aye.
Ms. Fair.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Tower.
No.
Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So that is our agenda. I have just gotten some feedback that I am not being heard. Oh, she can hear me now. Never mind. Okay. So what we need to discuss, I'm going to ask Superintendent Anderson to kind of give us a background on why we're meeting this evening.
Sure, um, thank you Pam, appreciate it very much. Really tonight's meeting is intended to share information with board members and to answer any questions that you may have about anything with our E-12 learning plan. I know we've talked about it at numerous previous meetings, but I still think it's important to make sure that board members are up to date in terms of what's happening here. So that's the reason I was hoping we'd have the meeting. And if I could just jump in Pam, we could, you know, just start right in with by talking about the COVID rates, which are shown in the attachment issued by the Minnesota Department of Health. And these, this is the document that schools use to determine what the recommended, you know, learning model is for each district. And I want to point out a couple of things. First of all, the, this particular report is the one issued on August 27th. That would be last Friday. And it shows data going back about two weeks. So the latest column on this report shows data from August 2nd to August 15th. And I know that seems strange because, you know, we want the latest information possible, but this is how the Minnesota Department of Health does it. It's based on a 14-day case rate per 10,000 people, and it's also based on when a test is positive, is shown to be positive. It's on that specimen date. So if you look, you can look through each county on this report and you can see that Goodview County is, you know, for this particular report is listed as a 9.30. It's been trending up since July and, you know, my understanding is that the rates are continuing to increase even after this report was issued. You can see though that with a 9.3, that the recommended learning model is in-person learning for all students because it's between 0 and 10. Very close to 10. Once it reaches at least 10, then the recommended option is elementary in-person, middle school and high school in hybrid. And so I think it was, and I realize there are lots of different views about which learning model, you know, should have been adopted earlier and I respect, you know, each one of those views. But I do think that the board made the right decision in terms of, of our planning because we do have elementary kids in person each day, each week. And our middle school, high school, or at least starting in grades five is, is a hybrid model. Do you have any questions about this particular report?
How frequently is it issued, Carson?
It's issued every Friday.
Every Friday, okay.
I assume that anyone in the public can review it. And so you could just go onto the Minnesota Department of Health website and take a look at that, at it there. What I'm planning to do is that when I, you know, at board meetings, you know, I can just share this as part of the regular meeting. I think that makes a lot of sense. So I'll, I can add it, you know, whenever that Friday happens. I, oh, Holly, why don't you go ahead?
Uh, yeah. How many people in Red Wing Public Schools right now have been confirmed with COVID? Staff members?
Yeah, I, I do not possess that information and even if I did, I would not share it. But I will say that we have a very strong COVID response team that works with, with anyone who might have a COVID positive case or, you know, more likely, you know, was possibly exposed or has symptoms. And so they, they work with the ExU team and the Minnesota Department of Health to follow up on, on anything and everything.
Okay, so are you saying that that's private data just to expose, or just to inform us of the numbers?
I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm just saying that, that, that I do not possess that information and I'm not planning to share it.
Um, okay, give me some rationale on not planning to share. What do you mean by that?
Um, you know, it's a fluid situation, as with every other business and school district and other public entity across the state. And, you know, it, it just isn't, you know, if we started reporting that kind of information on a regular basis, I, I think it's gonna create lots of rumors and assumptions. Uh, you know, when we have, you know, we, we quarant, we've quarantined people and when we do that, it is typically because they show some symptoms. It doesn't mean that they have COVID, but they may have symptoms or, or had concerns about being in close proximity to somebody who did test positive. So, you know, we are addressing each individual circumstance as it comes up and I, I trust that nearly all schools are doing the same thing.
Okay, so are you at least letting staff know if somebody in the building has contracted COVID and FYI? Like, are staff getting informed of this?
Uh, we, we do contact tracing in conjunction with, you know, an outside entity that was kind of set up through the governor's office. And so if, and when we receive reports of that, you know, our contact tracing team will follow up with those close contacts and those people are therefore notified.
Are families gonna be notified?
Uh, notified about how many staff members or how many students?
Comes down with it and happens to be that student's teacher?
Yeah, if there's a, if there's a concern about someone being in close contact with anyone in that situation, then we will notify those individually. In fact, I'm glad you brought it up because that's one really important thing. We need the latest information as far as email addresses, cell phones, home numbers, work numbers from parents. We need that information because if and when, you know, there are cases in school, then we will follow the, the contact tracing routine. Uh, we've decided that there is this, the outside regional cooperative that is providing that service. Uh, but we are also ready to provide that service because that's a critical part in terms of addressing concerns.
So one more question. If a staff person has to go out because they've been exposed but they don't have COVID, how does that relate to their pay?
Yeah, and I can speak in general.
Yeah.
There have been some changes in terms of some of the quarantine requirements, so, you know, I'd rather defer that to our HR department and Shonda Jorgensen, our health and safety consultant. But again, that's changes a lot. So in general, our employees would qualify for federal, well, it's up to 80 hours of paid leave and that's mandated by the federal government. So, you know, there's some nuances to that, but in general, that's the, the situation. So they'd get up to 80 days of paid leave.
Is that?
Carson, is that based on, on, on federal just for the COVID thing? Or it's not family medical leave?
Mike, I'm not done.
Yeah.
Right then.
It's, um, it's related to the COVID.
Okay, thanks.
Um, so are teachers informed of that process? Teacher, staff, anybody, not just teachers, but are staff informed of that process?
You know, I know that we've provided information to staff, but, you know, the guidelines just changed, I think, earlier this week, or I think it was earlier this week. And so what I'll do is I'll, I'll send out the latest information, not only to families, but also to staff members.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Any other questions about the, the chart?
So Carson, if I'm reading it correctly, really before we need, I mean, based on, on this graph that I'm looking at with the 14-day case rate range, um, we can go all the way up to 19.9 and not have to change our current plan. Is that correct?
Uh, you know, or maybe a different way of saying it is that between 10 and, and 20, uh, the recommended learning model, you know, based on that framework would be exactly what we're doing now. And the reason I say that is that, you know, we can become more restrictive or less restrictive, you know, despite what that chart says. Uh, and I think that's important because if we had doubled our cases, for example, and we had received information from Mayo or from Goodview County Health, that, um, you know, that we were a hotspot, for example, and we're not, okay, I want to be the killer about that. Uh, but then, you know, I think there's a, a strong chance that we would become more restrictive with, with our planning. So that's the recommended learning model based on our two-week COVID rates.
Yes, I just wanted for that to be spelled out for the, the public. Holly, you have a, you're in the queue?
By the way, I'm sorry that my phone is going off here. I'll mute it here.
Go ahead, Holly. Did you have a question or a concern or something to?
Yeah, sorry. I was, I was on mute. Um, could you remind board members, please, to sign in on the bottom so we don't overtalk each other?
Duly noted, Holly.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, if there aren't any more questions, how about if I jump into the, the next part of our discussion? Uh, and that has to do with just some overall issues that we've been working with. I need to find it on my screen here. By the way, it's been a very, very busy week for a lot of people internally and externally, but it's also been a very good week as we've accomplished a lot and addressed a lot of things along the way. Um, and so, uh, you know, the next big issue that we've worked with has to do with staff availability. And, uh, you know, other districts are experiencing, uh, you know, similar circumstances. And just heard about two larger metro schools that just posted for dozens of positions. Uh, and so this is not a Red Wing only issue, it's throughout the state. Uh, with regard to teachers, as of last night, we are still looking for an additional fourth grade online-only teacher, high school English teacher, and a high school family consumer science teacher. Uh, I know that George, Jay, and Isaac are actively working to find replacements, but as of last night, those positions are available. And we encourage anyone to apply. Terms of substitute teachers, we do have spots available for throughout the year. Uh, some of our emergency subs are being hired every day for the entire year at a rate of $200 per day. Uh, other substitutes through Teachers on Call are being paid $200 per day for each day in September. Uh, and that's really geared for people who, you know, are willing to, to, to do that work in September and then, you know, possibly consider October and November and so on. Uh, and so we wanted to encourage some people to try it out. Uh, and then finally, we do have others who are on a day-to-day basis and they're also being two, they're being paid $200 in September. Uh, my guess at this time is that, um, you know, we would not decrease that amount, um, in subsequent months, but, you know, we just haven't made that decision at this time. Uh, support personnel has been a significant area that we've been addressing. As of last night, all general ed para positions are currently filled. Um, however, some of them are only working through September because they're helping us out. And, uh, so positions are still available. Anyone who wants to do those general ed positions in the elementary schools, uh, we encourage them to, uh, apply through the district's webpage. Uh, the high school also has one student monitor position available. Uh, we have, right now, we have enough special education assistants available to start the year, uh, but at least five more are needed as the year progresses. Uh, and so we are actively looking for those employees as well. Uh, we did have some interviews lined up this week and some other possibilities, but still we encourage people to apply because, you know, things will open up as we go through the year. Uh, substitute personnel substit, or support personnel substitutes, uh, we do have some substitutes available through Teachers on Call, but we can always use more. Uh, and so we encourage potential substitutes for teachers and for support personnel substitutes to go through Teachers on Call to apply. Nurses and substitute nurses, uh, right now we are staffed with our licensed school nurse as well as building nurses. Uh, and we have multiple substitutes, uh, so I'm feeling very good about where we are in that process. Custodians, uh, right now we are fully staffed according to the plan that the, the board adopted a couple of weeks ago. Uh, but, um, you know, we will likely be requesting one or two more custodians on September 8th. I, I talked to Alan and he's gonna, he was gonna be working with his whole custodial crew today on some training and that was one of the areas they're gonna talk about is, you know, where are the needs? Um, how many additional staff members do we need in order to, uh, you know, uh, to meet all of our needs throughout the year? Uh, also, uh, we're doing thorough cleanings on Wednesdays and I did authorize Alan to pay overtime for work on Saturdays, once again, for the cleaning. Food service, uh, we were adequately staffed to begin the year as of about two or three days ago. Uh, but then the United States Department of Agriculture, uh, extended the summer food program into this school year until at least December 30th. So that's great news because kids will not have to pay for breakfast and lunch while they're in school. Uh, and we're also gonna extend that out to our community partners as well. Uh, but, you know, that means more meals will be served and therefore likely more staff members. Uh, so Brent is working on, um, kind of reviewing where we are and how many more staff members we. Uh, so it's kind of, it's good and bad. It's great news because we'll be able to provide food at, at no cost, but we need the staff to do it. Uh, we do have about half of our substitutes who are usually signed up for food service did decide to come back, uh, so we're happy about that. Uh, and we, by the way, we also have enough substitutes right now for custodians. However, that can change a lot during the year, so we still encourage people to contact the school if they're interested in applying. Uh, other, another really important position that's available is a school home liaison for Native American programming. And, um, so we're, well, I believe it's posted and we will actively recruit candidates for that important position. So in a nutshell, those are the, the staffing, or that's kind of the staff availability. Uh, do you have any questions about that before I talk about some other things?
I do, Carson. Um, can we talk a little bit about the online-only help? I know, I see that you've re, um, that we're posting for fourth grade. Um, but what about the higher grades, five through 12, in particular, five through six? I, I, I feel like we shouldn't be losing sight of that pretty important group of kids who are gonna be home and distance learning quite a bit. Um, but also, um, they, they might need some, those teachers, especially five, six, maybe even seven, might need a little additional support. So can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, we talked about that with our administrative team. Unlike the grades K through four, uh, the fifth and sixth graders at the elementary are doing the hybrid. And so every day they will have about half of their kids, well, on Mondays and Tuesdays they'll have half of their kids and then on Thursdays and Fridays they'll have the other half. So, um, we concluded that even though, even if we hired online-only teachers like for fifth grade, um, you know, teachers would still need to connect with their students on each of the days of the week anyway. And so, um, it, unlike the grades K through four, it didn't make sense for us to hire the online-only teachers for fifth and sixth grade. Um, so with that being said, we'd also have concerns about finding people, um, who are, you know, licensed teachers who could come in and do that work anyway. Uh, but that's the reason we focus on just K through four. Uh, right now, just because of student numbers in the distance-only option, uh, we have one online-only teacher for kindergarten, one for first grade, two for second grade, uh, two for third grade. Right now, we only have one for fourth grade, uh, but we are actively recruiting candidates for another online-only position for fourth grade. Our numbers in fourth grade are about 30. Um, Tanisha Will, uh, you know, is, um, very good with, um, our online only. And I know she can, you know, work with that capacity. Uh, at the same time though, our preference is to find someone who's really good at online only to, to work with her.
Thank you. Uh, Janie, you're in the queue?
Thank you. So two questions, Carson. One, um, on the food service, on the summer meals coming out. Can volunteers help bring those lunches out since in the past we've had our summer program where volunteers distribute it to different buildings? So I just throw that out there. And then my second one, this might not be the appropriate time, so when it is, um, but can you kind of publicly speak about this whole ingenuity, uh, kind of drama going on, please? So, but whatever, at your agenda time, so.
Sure, um, I do have, um, I can answer the, the volunteer question for food service. Um, I, what I would like Brent to do is to, you know, kind of look at the lay of the land in terms of what he needs for personnel. Uh, and, you know, it could be personnel, uh, it could be volunteers, uh, who could fill that role. Um, however, these are union positions and so I think if there are qualified candidates, uh, we would go that route first. Um, but at the same time, I know there's an employee shortage throughout the, the region. And so I'm, I'm hoping that, or thinking that there will be some space for volunteers to help out as well. Um, in terms of edgenuity, if you don't mind, Janie, if we could just answer some of the other questions about the staffing first and then we'll go right into that.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure it was brought up. Thank you.
Any other questions about staffing? Well, great. You know, before we talk about transportation, building placement, and some other things, let's, let's address the edgenuity issue. Uh, I see Brian Cashman on the call. Um, I'm not sure if Sheri was able to make it. I know she was juggling a few different meetings. Um, Brian, were you gonna speak to it or is Sheri here?
I'm also here, Carson.
Oh, perfect. Sorry, I just didn't see on my Brady Bunch screen here. Um, you know, Sheri, could you kind of just explain the, the edgenuity issues that, that have been highlighted recently?
Sure, and I, hoping between Brian and I, we can clear up any misunderstandings. A little bit of background first. Um, we implemented countywide online learning back in 2014. We had a stakeholder group from all of our districts come together and at that point they chose FuelEd. And we used it really, um, for online seats, credit recovery. Uh, for instance, um, if a student hadn't passed a course, then they went into FuelEd, um, to get that credit. Um, we also used it to supplement programs of study in some of our districts. Um, so I wanted to start with that. This is the first time we've looked at full-time use of an online program. And we've moved from FuelEd, which we had for five years, to a new format, new program called Edgenuity. We did that because at the end of that time period, we brought up a stakeholder group together. We said, "How's FuelEd working?" And they decided that Edgenuity would be a better, um, avenue for our districts. In every instance, whether a student does one course or they would do a full, um, a whole load of courses, the students remain enrolled in their resident school district and the revenue continues to go to their revenue service. Um, so, um, some important information about Edgenuity. First of all, um, we buy seats from the company. So Edgenuity is a company, a school district purchases seats. It's called a concurrent seat. One student for each course, per class period, one is, is a one, okay? So, um, that only provides you with access to content. Then a district chooses whether they're going to use their instructor or an Edgenuity instructor. And if it's an Edgenuity instructor, there's a cost, uh, about $325 per course. If it's the local, um, uh, teacher in the local school district, it would be on the master contract. So based on, based on whatever that rate is. So there's been some questions about the cost, like, how could we say the cost might be $200 or $5,000? So going into this year. So going into this year, as we were negotiating and moving from FuelEd to Edgenuity. Edgenuity, you know, like any business, wants our business. So they used the costing from our previous contract with FuelEd. And provided us unlimited access to licenses this year at the secondary level. So if one student uses it, the cost is very large. If a thousand students use it, the cost goes down. So I think there was some confusion as to what what the costing was, and so that's the reason. You also heard that this was a pilot year. It's a pilot year because we're piloting the usage. How many courses are we going to access? What content are we accessing? How much enrollment will we have? That's what we're testing out because our year-two contract will be based on that real data. And so it isn't a pilot in that we're piloting to see if Edgenuity is a is a good company. So for this year, if a large number of students access it. Then the cost per seat goes down. And yes, the ADM we bring in for those students would be greater than that cost. But even now, adding teacher costs to it or going into next year, it's fairly even. So I think a concurrent seat is just under $700. And then if you add the cost of a teacher to that, or the Edgenuity teacher at 325. And then you multiply by the number of class periods you have, you're gonna find that that's the full ADM for the student. So districts do not make money on this. But it provides an avenue for some students that need something different. They have, you know, credit recovery to do, or or they want to explore something that we can't offer as a district. So it's, it's, it's there for students and for the right students. We want a good fit for those students.
Can I, can I? Holly has her name in the queue, so I'll give you the.
I'm wondering if Holly would just let me finish the last piece about my conversation with MDE. And then, your questions, would that be okay, Holly? So, like I said, in the past, we've only used these as singleton courses, and we've never looked at a full load. All right? So if you go to a full load, you, the district, have to become a an enro- a an approved district, if you will. And there's a process to go through for that. In all of the things we were juggling, we missed that, okay? That doesn't mean we weren't going to do it, we just didn't get on it as quickly as we maybe should have. So the department has said a couple of things. One, they're hoping we can partner with Edgenuity to meet the requirements to become an online provider. They acknowledge the challenges we're experiencing right now in planning and implementation. We've already submitted a letter of intent. And we are working on an application. Edgenuity has all of the Minnesota standards in place. So it's a matter of filling out the application, filling in those parameters to show that. The application then really sets it up so that you are carefully monitoring your students. You're monitoring attendance, you're monitoring all the other things that a school district would normally do. The last thing I wanted to say is, to start the year, we have two options. One, we can use local teachers to partner with the Edgenuity teacher. We can also start with the Edgenuity staff and gradually release. And depending on how soon our application is done, those two things might happen simultaneously. So the way the assistant commissioner worded it was, please be actively working with Edgenuity. To work toward a gradual release, transitioning from using their staff, unless you become approved in the meantime, to delivering instruction with districts. So I hope that kind of covers all the questions that seem to be out there. Brian, was there anything I missed before we start taking questions?
I don't think so.
Go ahead. There's Holly and then Janie.
Okay. Okay, so I have two things. Number one, when this was first presented, I had huge reservations about it. Understanding that teachers have a contract with Red Wing Public Schools. They have board-approved curriculum that they're to be teaching. That we approve. And so can you speak to a little bit about how this impacts teachers when we can just as easily outsource them? To a program like this?
Well, as part of the online application, we have to assure that we are not laying teachers off. So I guess that's the first, first thing I would do to explain that. This can't be shown as a tool that has allowed us to lay off teachers. It's not allowed in the application process. And it is monitored to become an approved online site. They monitor you and come out and do site visits, and that is something they will look at.
Okay, so if I'm a parent and I signed up for this to be starting on Tuesday, what can I ex?
I think you can expect a great experience. I know that there are thirty students that are signed up to do Edgenuity. They will have a full course load. Those course loads are going to be matching the same standards that you approve as a board for English language, for math, for social studies. So it will be a strong education, I would think.
No, I mean, like, do they log on? Do they get an email?
Oh, yes, yeah, there's, yep, all of that is communicated to them. They are, get enrolled and they will have that information.
Should they be fearful that that's going to stop at any time?
No. We have a two-year contract with the company right now, so it's not going to end. We're just working through an additional process right now.
With the state?
Yeah, for the approval, for the approval for us to become an appro- so Edgenuity does not become an approved online provider. Okay, the districts actually become approved online providers. And then they use a tool like Edgenuity.
Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt you. So the two options are that we get approved and we continue with the Edgenuity curriculum. And the Edgenuity teachers. Or we don't get approved and we have to transition our own teaching, teaching online through Edgenuity?
Either way, we're going to need to go through the approval process. So it's it's not a matter of which teacher we use. It's a matter of, and Brian certainly jumped in, but it's a matter of how much time the student is enrolled in online programming.
Okay, so we have.
They are full-time in online programming, you must be in approved program. If they're less than full-time, you do not have to. It used to be fifty, a fifty percent threshold. Now it's they could have one class in brick and mortar, the rest online, and you would not need to go through this approval process. Which I think is how we've always thought about it, and so we just missed this in the frame.
Okay, but I mean, so what about the transition using Red Wing teachers? You speak a little bit more about how that will work?
Yeah, that's, so Carsten was talking about some of the work we've been doing to get things fully staffed. And we still, even today, we're talking about needing to maybe move teachers around. So we're still working through that. I really don't anticipate that it's going to be an issue. It's not as if we have a hundred students choosing this option.
Okay, so, yeah, we have what?
I think it was just under thirty.
Okay, so what is that bill then, just thirty right now as it stands, that we have to send to Edgenuity?
So we have a contract for unlimited seats based on our contract with FuelEd. So it's regardless of how many students Red Wing is doing, that's not going to change that.
Okay, so how much is that bill?
The unlimited seats this year across the county is $31,000.
Paid for by all of the county schools or Red Wing?
All of the county schools.
So you're billing each individual district?
Like we did with FuelEd, that's correct. It's billed on usage.
So are other districts choosing to go Edgenuity?
Other districts will be using concurrent seats in Edgenuity, yes.
Okay, thank you, Sherry.
Yeah, good questions. And Janie, who was next?
Yep, okay, thanks. So that's kind of where I was going, Sherry, is that it sounds like this is a GCD kind of that we're all working together with other schools together on this. Is that correct?
That is correct. Back in 2014, we were starting to see a slow drift of students to online programming across the state. And rather than lose, we want to keep our students within our communities. We want to be knowing that we're serving them. And so the superintendents at that point came together and said, "What options do we have?" Then they pulled a stakeholder group of teachers and principals together and landed on FuelEd. So that is exactly how this started.
Okay, well, and I love that it is an option. You know, it's a different option than even our own online, you know, option that we're giving with our, with our own teachers. So I think it's always what's best for the students, and and maybe it's a completely different learning way. And I know that's why some parents were looking at it both ways. But our other school, what other districts in Minnesota are using this?
Well, you know, I meant to look that up before I got on, and I didn't. Brian, do you know that?
I don't know specific schools. There's a number of schools that use it, and of course, different schools use different vendors, but.
And that's okay, but I mean, it would be fair to say that we're not the only district in Minnesota that is using, or the collaborative GCD that is using edgenuity.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Holly, you're back in the queue?
Thank you. I, I was informed that Edgenuity is not approved by the state. That there has to be an additional application for Edgenuity to be approved in this setting. Was I informed wrong?
I think that's where some of the confusion has been. So Edgenuity will never be an approved online school in a state. That is not the entity that becomes approved. The school district becomes approved to be an online school, and then it chooses a tool like Edgenuity.
For full-time or for teachers to transition into?
For full-time, either way, we could use it just for credit recovery again. And we will be using it for credit recovery. We can also use it for summer programming. So some of my districts, for instance, do summer programming to help our targeted services kids during this, during that timeframe.
Okay, so I did hear it right, but it might not have been conveyed right.
Right, it's, Edgenuity is not going to ever be an approved online school in Minnesota. Districts will be, districts or charters or private schools can become an online school, an approved online school. And then they use a tool like Edgenuity.
Okay, so that's, that goes back to this. Is it true then that Edgenuity was not one that Minnesota was looking to approve originally?
No, I wouldn't say that because they would never, Minnesota would never look to approve them. They don't approve service providers. They, they approve a school district.
Okay, but there's our, there's certain services that that MDE will allow, hands down.
You'd always have to be a district, as a district, you always have to go through the application process to become an online provider.
Okay, thank you.
Regardless of which tool you use.
Okay.
This is really helpful, Sherry. It's really good to hear all this background information because I think we've all kind of had these questions too. All these detailed in the weeds questions, so this is really great. Arlen, you're up next.
Yeah, thank you. I normally don't like to comment as a board member about what the media may be put out here. But I think some comments seemed very negative towards our curriculum director here, giving errant information to us earlier about Edgenuity. And the way I understand all this is she is, was relaying the information she was giving from our ed district. And this is an issue that every district in the Goodyear County ed district that uses, plans to use Edgenuity is probably facing at this time. It's not, in my opinion, it's not a shortfall on our end here as far as our curriculum person other and relaying the information that she was given. And it was not part of her duty to develop the curriculum at that time, but I'm sure she will work with you and everything. But I just want to direct that out, that I think it was a little bit harsh on some things that were put out in that story that I read. And, and I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Arlen, I will say, one of the comments in the newspaper was the, the money part. Whether the course was 2,000 or 3,000. And I think I explained if there's one cost and it's unlimited licenses. One student uses it, it's going to be a $31,000 cost. Okay, if 2,000 students use it, it's a very different cost. So Jess didn't get into the weeds, but she knew what she was talking about. So I just, yeah, I agree with what you're saying.
Holly.
Microphone. Well, when she got into the weeds, she said things like 3,000 versus 200, which would be averaging out what you're just saying, correct?
Right, but I, what she was saying wasn't incorrect. It was just that the topic, there was just a lot more beneath it as to why that would be the case.
Right.
I think some people interpreted that, well, she doesn't know what it's, and how could it be that vast? But she did know what she was talking about, so.
Right, I I got the sense that she did. Like she said it was gonna be this much if we had one student, it was gonna be this much if we had 500 students.
Right, right.
So, no, I I just think it all came upon really quick and you know, things got missed and we're moving forward.
Absolutely, it's all we do right now.
Thank you, Sherry. Does anybody else have any questions for Sherry or Brian on Edgenuity?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you too for being here and explaining that for us. That was extremely helpful. All right, Superintendent Anderson, do you want to resume that transportation plan then?
I have a couple of more teaching-related issues, and then we'll jump into there. One of our concerns at the high school has been balancing classes due to the hybrid model. Because we have half the kids on Mondays, Tuesdays, the other half on Thursdays and Fridays. And of course, we split the, the names by the alphabet. And so there were a lot of sections with initially too many kids coming to school on Mondays and Tuesdays with our room capacities. And of course, the same on Thursdays and Fridays. We've been really monitoring that very carefully. And I know that the high school admin team and counselors and secretaries have been spending days and nights, you know, working on this. And I'm pleased to report, according to Jay just a few minutes ago, that we have all classes that are balanced right now. There is one class, except for one class. And so we just need to make one more adjustment. But I know that was a lot of work, so I'm grateful for the, the work that our high school staff did there. And then finally, I know there were some questions about how specials are going to be offered in the elementary level. And so I did ask Jess if you, if you're okay with it, just quickly kind of go over the, the plan for that.
Hello, everyone. I'm just gonna share my screen here. So I think there was a question about maybe like the schedule and starting that, that date there that says September 28th. I believe is where the questions happened. So the reason that we're starting September 28th was, part of it was to make sure that we had the curriculum. We are building this curriculum so that the teachers have a resource to go to. And actually, one change that we did based on teacher feedback was, instead of having, I'll show you kind of what it was here with our STEM site, is that we just did lesson one, two, three. Instead of that, we're gonna do more September 28th and October 5th. This is the lesson. So like if people need to go back and say, "A kid missed this," this is what I have to pull from instead of which lesson am I on? So it'll be a little bit different based on teacher feedback and how they can best utilize it. So the reason here, so if we look. The reason that we are also doing that is so we have time for process and procedures to be built into the specials time in the first few weeks of school. What our, what our teachers and our administrators said was, let's make sure that we have, we have some time to get these K six students in and know, how do you wear a mask? How do you get myself? a mask? How do you get myself into my Chromebook? How do I get into my schedule? What is my routine? What does it mean to, what's the winger pride and PBIS? And how do we have winger pride in the, in the classroom? And all of those things of process and procedure for our younger kids so that they are ready to go and hit the ground running. And the teachers know this is the special section and this is the time that we do it every day. And then they have the ability to then go right into those lessons strong on September 28th. We also just got approved to make sure that we can have these kits for every student K through six. We're working with the Sheldon, we're working with Red Wing Public Schools Foundation and utilizing our budgets for PE and music and our art budget to make sure that we can get these kits K6 to our students so that if we have to transition to distance learning, we can still be utilizing our specials at home. And they can still follow their schedule and they can still have this kit, this bag of things that they need in order to do that at home. And that's equitable across all of our, for all of our students. So if anybody has any questions about that, I can stop sharing my screen unless people would like me to go to different parts.
Holly, did you have something that you wanted to ask?
Yeah. Thank you Jess. So I have two questions about the co-teaching process. So what are the special teachers doing up until September 28th?
Oh, the specialists or the specials are going to be taught by our general ed teachers being, pushing in. They are going to be the teacher of record for that teacher pair, I'm going to say. For that teacher pair, they would be, that core teacher would be the teacher of record. And then our specialists are also a pair with that core teacher to make sure that they have the support and that we have the oversight in the classrooms. And where that direct instruction is coming from will be based on the specialist or the pair teacher based on their licensure and what they feel comfortable on. We did a co-teacher training that we talked about, there are these six different models of co-teaching and which one makes sense best for your pair is based on your expertise, your licensure area, and making sure that we really follow what, the expertise in the room. So it'll, it'll look a little bit different based on the pair that we have. For instance, we have like an art specialist with a core K6 licensure. That'll look different than two teachers that have the elementary ed K6 license in both classrooms. It'll just look different whether we beam in first time instruction or what happens with that.
Okay, thank you. What about co-teaching that's going to go on with Edgenuity? What's the training around that?
The co-teaching with Edgenuity?
Yeah.
Um, with, are you talking about with Nikki Larson?
Yeah.
Uh, they, Edgenuity has, we went through, I actually sat in on it so that I could know what kind of training Nikki is getting. And then we also had Mick Wenland sit in on it as well. So we could all see kind of the starting point of what that looks like. But Edgenuity takes the lead on doing the training for the teachers and then also doing the slow release of saying, how does that, how do, how do we, that's the application process for Edgenuity is just, and through the state is to say like the slow release of us as the, as the teacher, the co-teacher taking over that instruction.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or while we have Jess on the line here? Anything else you want to share with us Jess?
I am just really proud of the work that has been done with these specials and bringing together the community and the teachers to do this has been just an awesome experience. We're also working with Inside Out, which is an organization that brings scientists into the classroom and they are building content for us for free because they're so excited for our partnership that we're having in years to come. And also the possibility to partner with GCD districts as well and that connection that we have. So it has been, I mean, the, the amount of support that the Sheldon has given, the amount of support that are also, our Red Wing Public Schools Foundation has given us to make this be able to happen. And the generosity of the teachers that had applied for Red Wing Public Schools grants that maybe aren't able to happen anymore because they're field trips. They have given that money back to Red Wing Public Schools Foundation so that we can fund the kits that are happening to go out to the, the students. So just the generosity all around in our community to kind of wrap around and do this together. Because in the time that, this crazy time of a global pandemic coming together is really what we need. And that support has really been shown through the community. So I'm proud of Red Wing.
There's absolutely a lot to be proud of right now. So thanks Jess for, for that great background. Anything else for Jess? All right, then I will bring it back to you Superintendent Anderson to move along in our plan there.
Yeah, I'll just briefly highlight some of the, the biggest issues that we've heard from parents and others in the community. First, transportation. I know board members have heard this before, but I do want to emphasize again that we had to make significant transportation changes this year in order to get our ridership counts under 50% at any given time due to state guidelines. So we took it very seriously and came up, I think, with a very good plan. As you know, we have neighborhood schools and then the secondary school. Because of that arrangement, we are keeping the households together as much as possible. But then we also eliminated the need for transfer buses. And that is a huge positive change for students, their parents, and for staff members. So I'm really glad that we won't have those transfer, you know, a dozen or so transfer buses, or maybe not a dozen, but however many there were at the middle school on a daily basis. Another point of emphasis is that we are running the same routes at the same times on every day of the week. I should have included Wednesdays because our K through four kids are, are, you know, being transported on Wednesdays as well. So every day they're running the same routes. And that's so that, you know, students and parents don't have to determine what time the bus is coming every other day. You know, it's just the same each day. The toughest part probably in the whole E12 learning plan has been, for me anyway, increasing the no bus zones to two miles for each student. And unfortunately, this was necessary as we had to cap, you know, our buses at the 50% capacity. But it's painful. I've talked to or emailed several parents who are 1.9 miles or 1.95 miles away from, you know, their assigned school. And they don't have, you know, their own transportation to get the kids to school. They're, you know, sometimes the kids are, are, you know, walking up a bluff to get to Jefferson and, you know, just all, all over town. So that's the, the one thing that's was really tough for me. However, we do have to take it seriously because we need to keep it under 50%. I will say, like we do every year, after the bus route stabilized, usually in the third or fourth week in September or early October, the routing company will review the bus load counts and then hopefully we can reduce the no bus zones. I cannot promise it, but I know they've done it in, in the recent past. And so I'm hoping we can do it again this year. Also, related to the cap issue is that we do have staggered starting at any times. So buses can run twice. That reduces the ridership significantly on the bus. Right now, buses are averaging about 35 students at any given time. This is less than the 50% requirement. I will say though, that the, our, you know, we only have the five through 12 kids every other day. So some of those buses will be less than the 35%. For example, the secondary routes should be significantly less. Also waiving the parking fees for this year should encourage more people to drive themselves and hopefully their siblings to school. That should help the ridership counts as well. Any questions about transportation?
Janie and then Jim.
Thanks Carson. Yes. Um, you know, I think I'm having a hard time with the emails too. It is, you know, having little kids, all of us having kids, you know, whenever you think of little kids walking on busy roads. But what are we doing to help connect people with these neighborhood schools now that, you know, parent committees aren't there? And, you know, unfortunately, we do live in a society now where some people, you know, you don't talk to your neighbors as much. And, but are some of our schools just being active about trying to connect people and, and build some relationships there?
I, I will say no in terms of transportation, just because I think it's, it's, you know, the parents and the kids are going to have to make those connections themselves. And I certainly don't want to be in a situation where I'm, you know, matching up a student with a stranger, you know, who's driving the car. I will say though, that there are community members out there who are working to try to make some of those connections. And, and I think that's going to be the best way, you know, because, you know, there, for example, there are some kids who spend all of their time on weekends together and evenings, you know, from different families. And so in that scenario, if, you know, one family can pick up the other on the way to school, you know, if they mask up and that kind of thing, it'd be a short drive. So, you know, should be okay. But Carson doesn't want to make those arrangements and I don't think the school does. But I think parents will naturally evolve to make this work.
And Jim?
Thank you Madam Chair. Kind of piggyback on what Janie said on the emails. You know, I, I understand the two mile, I get that. I voted for it. There's got to be circumstances. The lady that Ms. Keller, who emailed us because she didn't get answers that she was asking about on south side of Highway 61 going to Jefferson. That kind of reminds me, I mean, how, is there kids within on the south side of 61 and the north side of 61 and what we call the Burnside area, Red Wing Avenue, Danforth, Fairview, Rain, Lawrence, Charles, Rose, all those streets. If they're less than two miles to Burnside or Jefferson, are we doing anything? Cause the last thing we want, and she makes, I think, a pretty good point about, we don't want a small child or any child having to cross a four lane highway at any time going to walk to school. Or, so I'm just hoping that we can, you know, something could be done better to have better communication with them. So they don't have to email us their frustration because they don't get, not that they need to get what they want, but there's got to be a solution to, to the problem because it's been there for quite a while. It's been there. But we have, we did go to two miles now instead of a mile and a half. So that did make a difference. But you got it. I mean, I can't believe anybody would want, anyone, any one of us on this Zoom or Zoom call or whatever you want to call it tonight, would want our child crossing Highway 61 at 7:30 in the morning to get, go down North Service Drive to walk to Jefferson School. So we have to make some arrangements and I hope you can figure that out sooner than later. Thank you.
Yeah. And, you know, we, we typically, every year we receive dozens of requests. And so I know that the transportation department, or what I typically do is respond to the parent or call the parent, and then also copy the transportation department. And then, you know, they will review different requests. And they take it seriously. Usually they invite Terry Johnson to, to meet them. Sometimes I'm included too. So we can kind of review the, the different areas. And sometimes the answer, you know, to those requests is no. And sometimes it's yes. It's a lot easier and better. And for me to, when I, when I can say yes to something, it's really hard to say no. And, but at the same time, we have to be exceedingly cautious because we do have those, those bus limits or bus capacity limits. So we do take those requests and I know the transportation department will be looking at the, not only the, the, the no bus zone request, but also the hazardous route requests.
Thank you Madam Chair. If I may follow up a little bit. Not quite sure that's an answer that really answers the question. Kind of skated around it in my eyes. But it also brings up more issues, the fact that it's called delegation. And for the superintendent to be dealing with these, we have other things going on. So it just falls down into the whole supervision level and organizational chart that we don't have. And we need to get updated. So with everything else going on, we need to figure that out with, along with everything else facing us today.
Well, I, I, I will say that when I respond to the parents, I copy the transportation department and then they take it from there. So, you know, that's the delegation, you know, right there. And, you know, I, I'm not going to, you know, promise that something can be addressed for each and every family that puts in a request and it's discussed at a board meeting. You know, I'm just, you know, that just doesn't make sense Jim.
Well, I understand that, but you brought up the best transportation issue tonight. I wouldn't have come up if it hadn't. I'm just bringing it up for discussion. We all got the email and I think it's a, a valid question is what, what are we doing for the kids on lower Burnside, on north and south side of 61 that are within two miles of the school? And I didn't get an answer on that. We're requesting them to cross the highway or walk along the highway. Or that's not acceptable. So come up, we have to come up with a solution.
Any other questions about transportation?
Yep, Holly's there. Go ahead Holly.
Um, my question was before transportation, but I did want to mention quick since we're talking about transportation. We also have young kids walking up Highway 58 going to the high school, which is a nightmare thinking if, if I was a parent having to think of that or have my child do that. So that's all I can say about that. But Carson, my question was about, once again, teachers and leave, but you can come back to it later if you want to move on to something else, just so we get back to it later.
Yeah, maybe we can finish transportation, a couple more items. And then I think there should be a kind of a chance for, for other questions kind of that may, may arise.
Okay, that's fine.
That sounds good. Go ahead Carson.
Okay, the, the next item has to do with building placement. This is even a hotter issue this summer, of course, because we converted to neighborhood schools. The transportation department really needed to take the lead in terms of determining attendance boundaries. Because they have the, the maps, they have the software, and of course, we have to consider busing needs as part of all this. So there were a lot of issues surrounding, you know, some of the decisions we had to make. First of all, we have a lot of people living within no bus zones for multiple schools. You'd think that would make it easier, but it really complicates things because people are really close to each other and some are assigned to Jefferson, others to Sunnyside, you know, those kinds of things. You know, our elementary schools have classrooms with significantly different sizes. And so, you know, we need to cap how many kids are in each one of those classrooms based on state guidelines. And so, you know, we're, we're constantly reshifting the, the different classrooms that, that students are assigned to. We have to, you know, obviously we need to reduce as many students as possible who are riding buses in order to meet the state guidelines. And so that played into the building placement decision. Because if there were people within that walking zone, we tended to keep them in the walking zone so that they would walk. And obviously, the intent is to reduce ridership because we want to first meet state guidelines, but we want to reduce time that, that kids are sitting, you know, close to each other on a bus, even if they're wearing masks. We also really tried to keep class sizes comparable across elementary schools. When possible, the emphasis is on the when When possible, the emphasis is on the when possible. Um, because, you know, some of our schools have large classrooms and so really teachers could keep the entire class and still maintain social distancing guidelines. Uh, so you may have twenty kids in a class, but in other buildings, just because of the size of the classroom, we'd have to split up that same class into two, uh, smaller classrooms. So, uh, that made it tricky too, when you're trying to decide who goes where, especially when you have family units, so you have a kindergarten or a second grader and a fifth grader going to the same school, well, um, you know, it makes it challenging. Uh, another thing is that we've had a lot of kids enrolling, uh, over the past week or two weeks. Uh, we've also had some who are choosing the online only option, some who've changed their minds and have come back, uh, into the building. So enrollments are fluctuating much more than they typically would in a year. And I get it. I understand where parents are coming from, uh, but, you know, all those things have been playing factors, um, you know, in terms of building placement. Uh, at some point, um, you know, the transportation routing company had to draw the school attendance boundaries, um, somewhere in order to, to meet the, the factors that we just talked about the best they could. And then we've been deciding, deciding kids accordingly. I've had, um, quite a few, uh, requests for changes, uh, in building placement. Uh, we are denying, uh, nearly all of the requests, even though we consider each one. Uh, I'll give you an example of, um, a request that was approved today when the elementary principals met. It had to do with a, um, you know, there were two siblings living in the same household, but for whatever reason, one was assigned to one building and the other was assigned to a different school. Well, you know, we made the arrangement so that they could go to the, the same school together. That's been one of our objectives from day one. Uh, so that's one of them that we've said yes to, uh, but we're saying no to, uh, probably about ninety percent of the requests. Uh, so again, that's not an easy thing. Uh, do you have any questions about the building placement process?
I don't see any questions right now, but I did wanna just mention to all of you that, um, both Ireland and I went over to Jefferson yesterday. Um, and it's, it's a really great place to be and I know that the neighborhood is really excited to have a school back there. But if you get a chance and can walk through the building, um, in a very short order, they've made a, a huge amount of strides in terms of turning that building back into a marvelous place of learning. And, uh, I met with a lot of the teachers there yesterday and, and you can feel the excitement. They're ready and they're, uh, they're excited to have those kids back. They've thought of everything, um, the new equipment, the TVs that are in there. Uh, it's just amazing. So if you do get a chance to get over there sometime this fall, um, I'm sure they would welcome you.
And then the last, um, uh, kind of issue, um, it has to do with our student management system and communications, uh, from the school level. Um, it was, um, an amazing amount of work that our, uh, secretaries, uh, and, um, student support granators and others had to do to, to essentially recode every, uh, near or most elementary students in the system. And, um, so we, we use a, a program called Synergy Information Systems, uh, to handle all of our student management system. First, synergy is working fine. You know, there aren't issues with that. Uh, but, uh, before we can re-code people like into Jefferson School, uh, we had to submit the request to the state, uh, for them to authorize it and for them to give us a building code, uh, in order to put into the ju- synergy system. So that took longer than it, than what we had expected. Uh, even though we, we put in the request the day after, uh, the meeting that approved keeping Jefferson School. Um, but after the state approved it, uh, then we had, um, set up all of our grade, um, configuration changes, our sections, our classes, our teacher reassignments, uh, and all those things. And just, uh, this week, uh, or end of last week and this week, uh, secretaries have been really working on recoding, uh, those kids into the synergy system. So just wanna make it clear that our synergy system is working fine. Our employees are doing really good work to, to re-code all of the student information into the, into the synergy system. Uh, but just because of the timing of that state approval, uh, it's, you know, ran up to last week and even this week. So, uh, but we are, uh, ready to start the school year. The reason I brought this up is that, uh, until, uh, today, uh, the principals, um, did, were not able to send emails to all of the kids assigned to their buildings because we were still recoding all of the kids into their newly assigned buildings. This is for the elementary schools. Uh, and so, uh, Julie Dahl did verify today that, uh, or she downloaded lists of kids assigned to each building. I forwarded that to the admin team and so they can double check, uh, to make sure that our school messaging service is working, uh, with those links. So anyway, in case people are wondering about, oh, why aren't the, the principals at the elementary level sending out messages? That's why. They weren't able to until, uh, so, uh, we're, we're back, ready to go there.
Heidi wants to know if there's any other technology issues?
Yeah, um, we are still, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. Um, you know, I got a letter or an email from a parent today, uh, complaining about, uh, the pickup of a Chromebook at the high school. Um, and, um, you know, clearly our goal is to provide, you know, uh, you know, to, to respond to, to each parent as soon as they drive, drive in, uh, but it didn't work out for this one parent. Um, and, uh, I will say though, that the high school, um, had their act together today. There's no doubt about it. Uh, we're not perfect, uh, but, you know, the, the staff members I briefly talked with, some of the parents I briefly talked with, were very pleased with how that happened at the high school today. So, you know, obviously not every parent was happy, but, um, you know, the people, people I saw and talked to were calm. They were happy. They were thrilled to be actually getting their equipment so they can start school on Tuesday. Um, it's been, uh, an amazing shift. Uh, Mike Pagel is, you know, Mike Pagel is an elementary principal who's busy already. Uh, plus we've had all these changes, including staffing and student changes. Uh, plus he took on, uh, the Director of Technology role. And, um, he's had a lot of work on his plate, you know, like the other administrators too, uh, but has done a really good job coming up with policies and procedures, handbooks and, uh, kind of overseeing the effort. Meg Lahammer, uh, Lori Mitchell, and, you know, Charlie and Julie, I could go on and on about all the people who have really stepped up, uh, to make this process work as, 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 as well as it is.
Carson, can you speak a little bit to, um, I, I had received a call from a parent who was, um, asking about the, the twenty-five dollar insurance fee for the Chromebooks. And then we've also gotten a lot of conversation around why can't we use our own devices when we have them? So if you could talk to those two things, that would be great.
Sure, um, I'm gonna see, I don't think Mike is on the call. He had numerous things to do today. Oh, he is on the call.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, why don't you, uh, take on those two questions, Mike?
Yeah, so, um, I've got a, probably twenty emails that I still need to respond to, um, about this very thing. Uh, and in basically, in fact, I just sort of drafted something about ten minutes ago and sent it out to the admin group and to Carson to take a look at, but, um, there, there, I'm actually gonna try to pull that up here on my computer. Um, if I can find it, of course, now. All right, so the, the long and short of it is, um, you know, we, we kind of talked through in a previous meeting about the reasons why we prefer a district device, uh, over a student supply device. Um, you know, one, it's just from the standpoint of monitoring, being able to, if a device gets lost, we can track a district device. We would have no ability to do that on personal devices. Um, you know, we did, uh, adopt GoGuardian, uh, as a monitoring tool. That may work on some student provided devices, uh, Chromebook, for example, would probably still work on. But if they're on a laptop, um, it would be as simple as the student opening a different browser, get on, they're being monitored on Chrome, um, but then they could make the decision to open up Firefox or another browser. Uh, and there wouldn't be any ability for the teacher to be able to push out information or to see what the student is doing. I mean, we did get feedback, you know, and we got several emails in the spring, how do you keep my kid from being on YouTube? You know, and, and that's the answer to that, and we can't really guarantee that if they're not. Uh, the other pe- other pieces are the technology support piece. Uh, we, our tech support team was run pretty ragged this spring, trying to support, um, Chromebooks and iPads and MacBooks and Windows laptops and, and Amazon Fire tablets and Android tablets and everything else. Um, and so really, we need to be able to, to, to support devices. We need to have a consistent device. Uh, that we can also train some of our media techs, our media paras, uh, to be able to do some of the simple repairs and things with those. Um, so, I mean, those are some of the primary reasons why, why we really want people to use district devices. Look, here's, here's the flat reality of this. We can't force anybody to use a district handbook, really, or a district Chromebook. You know, ultimately, if a family is, is going to flat out refuse to, to use it, uh, I don't know that we can necessarily force them to do so. Um, however, and my response to the folks that have been emailing me will be the same, uh, is that with making a decision, well, a couple of different things. Number one, um, you know, if, if families have a Chromebook that they purchase on their own and they would prefer to use that Chromebook at home, uh, and have the child keep the other Chromebook at school, there's nothing that would prevent them from doing so, nor would we probably, as a district, really even know they were doing that. Uh, they would just need to understand that there's not going to be support for that device and there may be limitations to, um, GoGuardian and some of those other things that, that we have in place. Um, ultimately, if somebody flat out refuses to do it and provides their own device, um, the reality of that is that, number one, there would be absolutely no district uh, technology support for that device, um, because that is not a district provided device. So there just simply would not be able to be any district tech support for that device. Um, the other piece is, is just from a, a liability standpoint, if that device gets lost or if that device gets accidentally damaged, there's, there's no option, um, for a, a, um, low cost repair, relatively low cost repair plan, uh, like there would be with a district domed device. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with that. Um, I know I've gotten some questions about the, the repair plan piece. Um, that is an option. Uh, families don't have to, to adopt that. They can, they can choose not to. Um, but just like with bringing their own device, it does increase, uh, there's a liability there. If Johnny drops that device, um, and accidentally breaks it without the repair plan, um, that, that, there would be a liability. The family would have to pay for the repair. Um, and then, uh, in addition, excuse me. Um, the, uh, I lost my train of thought. It's been a long day. Sorry. Um, so that's, I mean, that's kind of where we're at in a nutshell. Um, you know, it's, it's, I'll be honest with you, I didn't expect, and it's not been a ton, to be clear. It's, it's not been a, a ton of pushback and what I've seen today, and, uh, I actually just talked to, uh, about an hour ago, I talked to, uh, one of the online, uh, K four teachers. They did, uh, device pickup today, uh, down in the bus zone at Twin Bluff, and I talked to her about how that went. And, um, she reiterated kind of what Carson said at the high school, that by and large, it went very, very well. Uh, people were appreciative. We do just have a, a, a small handful of folks that are, are really bucking, uh, using a device because they've got their own.
Thank you, Mr. Pagel. I think it just bears repeating, um, I, I know you've gone into this, uh, in, in great detail at our last meeting, but there's so much information coming across to parents right now that I think some of the information is getting lost or confused or blurred. And so I think the, the more that we can share with our families, the better it'll be. So that's why I asked you to, uh, repeat that. So, thank you.
Actually, you, you mentioned the, the fee, so I maybe could speak to that as well. Uh, and I, I'm hoping, you know, we got the, the handbook and those pieces out. And, and again, because this has been, um, a very unique year and a very unique summer, there are a lot of things this summer that are happening, um, later than they normally would happen. And, um, obviously, looking ahead to next year, there's gonna be, this will happen differently. But this is also why, uh, we are giving, uh, folks until the, um, thirtieth of September to really be able to read through that handbook, uh, to be able to make a decision about, uh, whether they're interested in the Chrome Care Plan or not. Uh, also in that handbook, it does state this, but I'll state it because it bears repeating. Um, part of, uh, the advantage of working through, uh, Community Ed, uh, for online payments, because there are two payment options. One is a check, uh, made out to, uh, ISD two fifty-six, uh, that can just be delivered to, with the, the completed form to the, uh, any school office. I'll be collecting those. Uh, there is also an online option through Community Ed. The link is in that handbook. Um, or they can call and connect with, uh, Community Education directly. Uh, and we certainly, we, we are not going to not get a Chromebook in the hands of any student because that, that twenty-five dollar repair plan, uh, is financially problematic. So Dawn has already had conversations with Dawn Wetteren, uh, and they're used to doing this with sports and other activities through Community Ed and Community Rec. They work with sliding scales all the time, uh, and will work with families on that. So if that piece is problematic, um, I would encourage folks to reach out to Community Ed, uh, and connect with Dawn Wetteren or Tanya Roth and, and work through that. Um, this is also why we did, uh, it's twenty-five dollars per device, but it's a fifty dollar cap per family. So if you've got, you know, four kids that need devices, yeah, two hundred dollars would, would be, was, is pretty expensive. Janie's raising her hand. Um, but that is why there is a fifty dollar cap, uh, on that family, uh, for a family as well. So I think that bears some repeating. And I, I, uh, plan, once the dust settles and we get into next week, um, I do plan to reach out to families, uh, with some additional information through Carson, cause he's got the access to email all families. I don't currently, uh, but we'll get some additional, some reminders and additional information. And, and, cause I agree with you, Pam, I think the more, we're all suffering from information overload right now. I, I spend every day worrying about what really important thing have I forgotten today? Uh, just because of the sheer volume of, of information that is coming at everybody right now.
Exactly, and I think you bring up a really good point, Mike, about how things, because of everything that we're dealing with this year, it, it's, our communication is not as, as soon as we would like it to be because there have been fifteen other things to get to that final piece before we can even bring that piece of communication out. So we appreciate very much patience, um, uh, from our family and our student, families and students. Um, because it had every decision that we've had to make as a district, as, as administrators, at technology, there's eighteen other pieces that have had to come prior to that final decision. So, um, thank you, Mike, in terms of all the work that you're doing to get all those devices out, um, and that handbook as well. That's, that's very helpful. And I think, again, the more that we can support our families, the more information that we can put into writing so that we can refer to it later. Um, all of those things are super helpful. Also, as the first day of school gets, draws near, I, I do know that the stressors from both teachers and students and parents, it's kind of amplifying. And so the more that we can, um, provide information in a way that, um, helps quell some of that stress, it's, it's always helpful. So, thanks for all your, Mike. Any questions for Mr. Pagel while he's here?
Pam, if I can just, a bit quick and I'll keep it short, but I know Elizabeth, my fifth grader, picked up her touchscreen Chromebook. And so I just wanted to share with everybody how cool those are, and I had never seen one, but I just wanted to say thank you cause I think they are much more usable for our younger students. So I just wanted to share that with everybody, that if they wanna try one out or make sure you look at it, cause it is very different than a normal Chromebook, so.
Yeah, and I should also mention, uh, especially for our young learners, um, we are working on getting out, uh, what are called clever badges. Um, and those will allow, one of the things we know and we found last spring is, um, the time it takes the average kindergartner, first grader, even second grader, uh, to log into the Chromebook. And of course, with the Chromebook, every time you close it and open it back up, you've gotta re-enter. Uh, it can be time consuming. And so what, uh, what clever does with these badges is that basically is a scanable, each kid will get a scannable code, QR code. And, uh, when you go through login process, uh, and there are directions that will be sent with them, uh, the child basically just has to hold that up in front of the camera and scan it and it logs them in, which, um, has made our kindergarten teachers very happy. which, um, has made our kindergarten teachers very happy.
That's neat. Well, and I know Elizabeth had already like logged in and entered her account before. I didn't have to do anything. So again, I think the directions and everything were really well done. And for those kids that have are a little familiar, eh, yeah, she's already on and, um, I'm excited for that new technology for our kids. And again, thank you, because I think it's good to show a little buy-in and a little, um, way to, you know, support the district a little bit with these repair plans. Um, because I think that was my biggest concern is, you know, you know, how do we make sure that people are using this bit safely and we take care of it and support our district in a way long-term with them? So great work, Mr. Pegel. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Otherwise, I'm gonna get back to this, uh, school newsletter I'm working on.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, doll.
All right. Anything else that you'd like to share about the E twelve learning plan for this evening? You were muted.
Uh, I don't have anything, but I'll take questions.
Go ahead, Holly.
Thank you. Um, two things. One, um, I wanted Mike to quickly speak about the synergy log out or the synergy issues that are going on because teachers are having a hard time accessing. Maybe Mike doesn't know. Maybe it's a Kevin thing.
Well, I think it goes to, to what, uh, Carson had spoke. There, there have not, there are not issues with synergy, um, per se. It's, it's that we basically, in a, in a normal year, we, we have to more or less, we, we have to change school placement for, for example, first graders moving to second grade at Burnside. Um, and we have to do the new teacher placements. This year, we more or less had to move everybody, uh, or just about everybody, at least K seven, uh, into new buildings, uh, new teachers. And so it's the time that's taken that. I don't, I don't believe anything is wrong with synergy. It's just that the time that it's taken to do that uh, has been longer than usual. And because of like we keep talking about the delayed nature of a lot of things this year, uh, it's just happened later. So, so now, um, we're getting to the point where um, teachers should be able to start getting in and seeing that. I know there's still, um, I, what I heard today anyways was that there still was some issue with Jefferson that they're working through right now to figure out. But I don't believe anything's wrong with synergy. I haven't been told that there is.
Okay, so are people able to log in from home? To do their work if they're working distance?
Uh, yes, they'll, they'll be getting the information. And actually, I do know, um, from the, the tech team that, um, the, basically the usernames and password, the email doesn't change. It's the same that they used last year if they were in. Uh, and the, um, uh, passwords, normally we passwords are reset over the summer, but given everything, they decided to leave them, uh, the same. Uh, and then I'm actually just reading an email right here. Um, Charlie is saying that he does have K five will be getting the clever badges, so they'll be getting those, uh, to log in. And, uh, Charlie is saying that there are cards being printed out with logins for the sixth graders. So, so the short answer to that is yes. Everybody will be getting, uh, the information uh, that they need to be able to log in on Tuesday morning.
They'll be getting it like in the next twenty-four hours?
I would have to connect with Charlie to know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. They're not gonna get it at four thirty on Tuesday morning. I know that. Uh, but I'm hopeful that, that by tomorrow, if not tomorrow, Friday for sure.
That's very stressful for teachers. I know you know that, you're principal.
I do.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I just had one more for Carson, but I can wait if somebody else wants to go.
No, go ahead.
Um, okay, Carson, really quick. If a teacher has to be quarantined and they go home, but they're not sick, can they work from home?
Uh, right now, our plan is that if, uh, teachers are quarantined, uh, for whatever reason, they stay at home and access those eighty hours of federal mandated leave. And we will hire a substitute to teach on their behalf, uh, in the building.
Okay, so I just want to make it clear. If you have to go home because you're quarantined, a sub will be teaching your classes.
Uh, yes, uh, yeah. Now, the teacher would still need to do their sub plans like they would on, on other days. And they would, um, you know, access those eighty hours of, of federal mandated leave while they're, uh, absent.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
Hey, one thing I'll just add real quick. Um, I've talked to, uh, you know, big nine superintendents on a regular basis and some of them had, you know, they have year-round schools or they've started early. Each one has said, as soon as the kids are in the building, everyone feels better. Kids feel better, parents, staff. So let's wait for Tuesday. It's gonna be a great day.
And that's a great segue, Carson, because Tuesday is our next meeting. We have a school board meeting Tuesday evening, uh, right here via, uh, uh, Google meets at uh, six o'clock. There's a personnel meeting just prior to that at three forty-five. There's operations meeting at four forty-five. Yep, okay. Any other meetings you'd like to highlight? There is a, meet the candidates. All your school board candidates are meeting on September fifteenth at five PM, uh, at the, uh, Band Shell down, uh, in the park. Uh, so they'll be socially distanced. We'll be outside. Everybody will have a microphone. Um, and then questions can be submitted prior to that. Um, they will not be taking any questions that evening. All questions need to be submitted prior to that. So, um, if you have any questions, there's a link, I believe, um, to the legal women voters on our school website that you can uh, access. And then there's a place where you can inquire about, uh, submitting questions. Any other meetings or future topics you'd like to add?
Uh, I will just add from MSBA, they've changed our September advocacy meeting for Southern Minnesota from September eighth, which would have been impossible for us to do, to September sixteenth. So you have the option, that's a Wednesday. You have the option of either logging in at, I think, eight thirty in the morning for, um, uh, the, if you missed any of the others, and then we'll have, uh, Southern Minnesota will be that evening. Wednes- uh, Wednesday, September sixteenth. I can't remember the exact time right now.
Thank you, Heidi. Will you, um, just put a note to, to bring that back up again on the eighth with the time?
Sure, yep.
That'd be great. All right, anything else? Well, I think that we're all set and ready to go for Tuesday. I'm excited to hear about how the day goes. Um, so I'll just say to all of you students out there, happy first day of school on Tuesday. I know, uh, all the kids I've spoken with in the last few days, they're pretty excited and ready to go. So, um, happy first day on Tuesday. Uh, and with that, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Jim.
Moved by Jim.
Second.
Seconded by Holly. Uh, and then Mr., any discussion on that? Mr. X, I'll start with you for the vote.
Aye.
Mr.?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Tower?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So we are adjourned. It is six thirty-eight PM. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you Tuesday. Happy first day.